Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to vice chairman, I'll accept a nomination for vice chairman.
I'll nominate Merle Price, second.
Motion and a second.
I want to nominate Joey.
Didn't call for discussion, Merle, you have to take it. All those in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
We're so predictable at Clinton City Schools.
Moving along, we have our TLN representative Curtis, you've done that in years past, would you consider doing that again?
Sure.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to...
I'll make that motion.
All right, I'll entertain. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carries. I'll adjourn the election of officers meeting, I'll go ahead and call the regular meeting of the school board to order. First item up on the agenda is to approve the agenda as presented, does anybody have any changes, additions, or deletions for our agenda tonight? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Moving on, we've got many recognitions today, but one of my favorite ones is the Otto Brown Scholarship.
Absolutely, so this is something that we do every August, for those of you who have joined us, welcome to Clinton City School Board Meeting, this is going to be the most riveting fun you have had in a really long time, because these people are certainly so exciting. But, one of the things that we do annually every August is, we are blessed enough with Kathy Brown, who is a Clintonian, and she has blessed us for many years with a memorial scholarship fund in honor of her parents, named Otto Brown Scholarship. And it goes just to Clinton City School employees when they want to further their education and get additional degrees that will benefit the children in Clinton City. Then, she provides the funding and some scholarships for you to do that through the University of Tennessee. So since 2003, her contribution to Clinton City Schools has totaled almost $120,000 in free education. Over the years, I know that my daddy was always really fond of Kathy Brown, but I have learned one thing about her, she is one of the most humble community members that you will ever meet, and she does not like recognition, she does not like for her name to be placed on things, she just does things that are good just because it's a good thing to do. And so she certainly is one of our good friends in Clinton City Schools, and she has joined us today, and our recipient of the Otto Brown Scholarship this year is Ashley Webb, who currently teaches art at South Clinton and North Clinton Elementary. So Ashley, if you would please come up with Kathy Brown and Dr. Bobble, if we can get a quick picture, Lori Erwin, if you would come up and be our Clinton City photographer, that would be fabulous.
Kathy, you can stay if you want to.
Ashley, you really can leave right now if you want to, I appreciate you coming and receiving that award, but we know you've taught all week, so you jet on out and get some good rest, thank you and congratulations.
All right, moving on, we have quite a few new staff members tonight.
We do, I think this may be one of the fullest that our meeting has ever been.
I think it's the one.
It is, which is a good thing, which is a very good thing, because we are very excited about the new people that are going to be joining us in Clinton City Schools this year. We really did not have, when you look out there, you would think that we've had a mass exodus of staff members, but we really did not have a mass exodus of staff members, we have used some of our federal ESER funding to fund some additional intervention positions, which then created teaching positions that were open. And then we'll talk about a grant that we're using in just a little bit, that allowed us to hire six additional teaching assistants to work with intervention. And, so, we are just blessed with several new employees. Now normally, guys, what we do is, these are some of the finest people that you will ever meet, we have a wonderful school board, they truly, when you're in some of the larger districts, you see that they represent their region and kind of really advocate for their general geographic area, that's one of the beautiful things about Clinton, is that we don't advocate for one geographic area over another, we're so small that they are all just really here to represent Clinton City Schools. All of these people are very professional, but they also take all the decisions that we make for Clinton City Schools, and they put the kids first. And you will see that it is a very kid-focused decision, they're very thoughtful about their decisions, but one of the things that they pride themselves on is they love, love, love to support our staff. You will never find a school board that is more supportive of a working staff and appreciative for the hard work that you do every day. So I'm going to introduce them to you first, and then I'm going to introduce you all to them. Normally, we would have you come up at the end, and we would do a great big, we're huggers here in Clinton City Schools, so we would be shaking your hands and hugging you and all that stuff, but COVID's not going to allow us to do that tonight, so I'm just going to, when I introduce you, if you could just stand up and let them put a face with a name, and then sit back down, and then once everyone is introduced, all of you all are welcome to go, we invite you to the front porch of City Hall on the steps, and Lori Erwin is going to take our annual beginning of the year new staff picture, and then after that picture is made, as much as I know that you would love to come back here and talk policies and procedures for Clinton City Schools, we're going to send you on your way so that you can get good and rested for Friday, the first week of school is certainly, certainly one of the tougher ones. So, we start down here at the end, just so that you all know, this is Curtis Isabel, he's a local lawyer in Clinton, and he has two sons, one is still at Clinton Elementary, one has graduated and moved on, and he's growing up way too fast. But, next we have Joey Smith, who is a local real estate agent in Clinton, he currently has two children that attend Clinton Elementary School, and he also is a huge supporter, he does a lot of work on, with the Main Street Project and with the Chamber and some of the growth things that we're seeing go on. Next, we have Merle Price. Merle Price is actually, she spent her career at Clinton City Schools, and if you're from North Clinton, you have a great big smile on your face, because everybody loves Merle, but she actually taught at North Clinton Elementary School, and then became the principal at North Clinton Elementary School. So you spent how many years working for Clinton City?
I hate to say it, 27 and a half, and I worked other places before here.
So, she brings a great perspective of what you all do every day, because she knows exactly what you do every day and appreciates that. Then next, she is also our vice chair of the board, and you just saw her get re-elected, and she was so excited about that. Then next, we have Dr. Tim Bobble, he is a local dentist in our town, actually, his office is located right across almost from Clinton Elementary School, and you have been on the board for how many years?
Fifteen or sixteen.
Fifteen or sixteen years, so he has a very, very good understanding of education and the ins and outs of what occurs, so he's a big supporter of Clinton City. Then we have KK Webster, KK Webster, she works in physical therapy and also real estate, and she is the mother of five children.
Grandmother of four.
So she loves the babies.
Five of my kids did go through Clinton City Schools.
So all five of her kids were ours, and now one of them actually works for us. And, so, she is a big supporter of Clinton City Schools, brings a great mother perspective and just a professional perspective to the board. And then last, but certainly not least, we have David Queener, and David Queener is retired from the Clinton Police Department, where he spent his career detective and all kinds of fun stuff with the Clinton Police Department. He has a granddaughter, Adeline, that goes to Clinton Elementary School, and so he brings a great perspective of a grandparent perspective, but also he pushes us on some things that we need to push on to make sure we're making good decisions, so he is certainly a great supporter of Clinton City Schools. And then you all know Scott Ray, so we'll just, you notice we have to give him a table to himself and kind of separate him a little bit, but, this is where I can eyeball him and make sure that he behaves, he sees my eye contact, he behaves. So, this is the board, they are here to support you, they are excited that you are here, if anytime you need anything, I will tell you, they are servant leaders, just like we try to be in Clinton City Schools, so please, they are very vested in our school system. Okay, now to introduce you all, and then we'll let the board, as you're walking out, we'll just test them to see how many of these names that they remember. So we'll start with Lori Chisholm, so Lori Chisholm, stand up. Lori Chisholm is going to be an instructional assistant at South Clinton Elementary School. She has brought her spouse with her today, Dani Chisholm, who is a pastor at First Baptist Church in Clinton, so they've been in our town for a couple of years, and she did some subwork with us last year, and we just enjoyed the work that she did, and she was one of the most requested subs, and so we grabbed her up with some of our ESER federal funds to help us with some tutoring, so welcome, Ms. Lori. We also have Caroline Cohen, is she here today? Was she able to come? Caroline actually is not a new employee, she was with us last year, we hired her mid-year as an IDEA, our special ed pre-K assistant, a part-time assistant at North Clinton Elementary. So she's been with us for half a year, but we just wanted you to see her face, she must have been unable to be here tonight. And then we also have Albert Earl, who I don't think was able to be here tonight, but most of you know who he is, he is going to come back and be a teaching assistant at Clinton Elementary School as part of our ESER funds and the additional tutoring program that we are doing. Carrie Eastgate was unable to be with us tonight, she has a sick daughter, but she is an instructional assistant from South Clinton Elementary School, she's recently moved to Tennessee, and so she is also going to be one of our federally funded teaching assistants that does some instructional work at South Clinton. Next, we have Aubrey Farmer, and I know I saw her, so Aubrey's not an unfamiliar face to us at Clinton City Schools, she's actually subbed with us, and she actually worked with us last year as kind of just an extra person, we called her an extra sub, and she helped with temperature checks, she helped with covering lunchroom and eating in classrooms, and she just was so pleasant to work with and so flexible, she just goes anywhere you tell her to go and does anything you tell her to do with the biggest smile on her face. She also worked summer school with us this summer, where she did an amazing job, and so we have hired her as a teaching assistant at Clinton Elementary School. So welcome, Aubrey. Then we have Hannah Ruth Fetzner, and so Hannah Ruth is with us, our kindergarten numbers at North Clinton increased so much that we had to add a second kindergarten class this year, so that is certainly a good problem to have. So her counterpart, Melanie Getelfinger, has come to support her today, but she's straight out of UT, and she came in, and it was just one of those things, when she walked in the door, her passion for kids lit up, and we knew she was going to be a great fit for Clinton City Schools. So she'll be the second kindergarten teacher at North Clinton Elementary School. And I will have to tell you that one of my favorite things about brand-new teachers is when they come and they see their classroom for the first time, there's nothing, you can't capture that joy, it is so amazing, but she walked into her classroom and she was just like exploding, and I said, "You so want to take a picture right now, don't you?", and she was like, "Yes, I do!", I was like, "Well, get out your camera, let's take some pictures." So she is going to do an amazing job. Next, we have Kelly Gomez, so Kelly Gomez, she has children that attend North Clinton Elementary School, she's also served as a sub with us at North Clinton Elementary School, and we have captured her as one of the additional teaching assistants at Clinton Elementary, and if you want, or North Clinton Elementary, if you want to read something that will bring tears to your eyes, you read her Facebook post about how much it meant to her that she has been officially able, Aubrey Farmer did the same thing, just officially been able to become a part of the Clinton City family and how much that means to them, so their heart is certainly in the right place. Next, we have Gialena Gonzalez, so Gialena is here with us, and actually, we have the sister, you'll get to meet the sister in a minute, but she has come to us, and we are very, very excited, she's going to be a teaching assistant at South Clinton Elementary School, but she is from Venezuela, and so she is going to come, and she did some work with Anderson County for short term, but she is going to come and be an instructional assistant at North Clinton Elementary, yeah, North Clinton Elementary School, so welcome, we are pleased that you're with us. Next, in the back, we have George Hawkins, otherwise known as, is it Chub? Champ! It's Champ, not Chub! I knew it was a C-H, Champ! So we learned mid-year in the summer that his nickname was Champ, so, sorry about that. He, just making sure y'all are listening, she, but anyway, he joined us midsummer as our maintenance team at Clinton Elementary School, and he is just a lovely asset to have, he's kind of a jack-of-all-trades, can do everything, and he has actually brought us two additional people that we will introduce to you in just a second, so welcome, George Champ, we are glad that you are here.
We'll be expecting to receive your grievance in the near future.
Next, we have Kaylee Howe, is Kaylee with us today, there, sweet Kaylee. So Kaylee did her student teaching with us last year at Clinton Elementary School, so she did a year-long internship with us, actually, her cooperating teacher went out on maternity leave, and she was doing such a fabulous job, we called her mentoring university and said, "Can we just let her fill in for the teacher and let the teacher just kind of oversee her?", and she did an amazing job stepping in. She is also, she's going to tackle her first year of teaching, she's also going to tackle the first year of Blaze Cheerleading this year, so, little prayers for her. So welcome, Kaylee, we are glad that you are here. Next, I do not think Hillary Keith could be with us tonight, but I know you all know that's part of our strategic plan, we have been trying to get a social worker for Clinton City Schools for quite some time, so Hillary Keith has agreed to join us as a part-time social worker as part of our strategic plan, and so she comes to us as a retired social worker from Knox County, but she's going to work for us part-time, and she's getting settled, but she'll be with us two half-days a week. Then next, we have Kenneth Langworthy, so Kenneth, stand on up. So Kenneth has been with us for quite some time, too, when did you come to us, Kenneth?
February.
February, so he came to us, do you remember, we did the contract with the temp service? So, this is how we found Kenneth, was through the temp service, and so after 90 days, we've just fallen in love with him, and he's done an amazing job, and so obviously, we offered him a job, he lives two doors down from Clinton Elementary School, and he is very good, he just brought us fresh corn the other day, and so we're learning lots of cooking tricks from Kenneth, but he is very, very invested with how the school looks, he loves to pressure wash, too, if any of y'all out there, just know, he finds it very therapeutic to pressure wash, so our sidewalks look amazing at Clinton Elementary School, but welcome, Kenneth, we are glad you're here. Next, we have Chesney Bolick, so Chesney, stand on up. So Chesney's going to be with us in kindergarten at Clinton Elementary School, and she was with us last year, and she did her internship with Patty Shoemaker in kindergarten, and then we did some swapping of grade levels at Clinton Elementary, and they had a kindergarten position open, and so she is joining us, so this is her first year of teaching, and that glows just all over her face, and she's just so excited to meet her little babies this week. So congratulations, welcome. Next, we have Nicole Miller, and so Nikki Miller, Nicole Miller, and so she is with us as a full-time interim this year, we swapped her from Campbell County, and she actually is going to be in the future marrying Officer Gentry, who is our SRO at South Clinton Elementary School, but she is going to be doing, we have two semester-long maternity leaves this year, and we wanted someone with some experience who could slide in there and continue quality instruction while those teachers were off with babies, so she'll be second grade at North Clinton Elementary School for half of the year for Brianna Rittenhouse, and then she's going to go to South Clinton for the second semester and do another teacher's maternity leave there. So we are tickled that you are here, congratulations. Next, we have Kami Morgan, Kami Morgan is going to be a teaching assistant, if you remember, we moved the CDC classroom to Clinton Elementary School this year, so Mindy Wilson moved from North Clinton to Clinton Elementary, and so we needed to hire an additional teaching assistant to work in that classroom, and so Kami is a parent of a Clinton Elementary School student, so she's very invested in our school, and so we are just excited to have her. If you're looking a little like her, and you're like, "Wow, she kind of looks like Kimberly Odell", that would be because that's her daughter. And, so, she certainly, it is in her blood to have a passion for children, so welcome, Kami, we are glad you're with us. Next, we have Jenna York, and so Jenna York is with us, if she reminds you a little bit of Lauren Murphy, sitting beside by side, Lauren, stand up, and they can see how much you look alike. But anyway, Jenna York comes to us, she did her internship in Oak Ridge City Schools, and then she interviewed, she's going to be first grade, so Lori Erwin in the back, Lori, stand up and wave, and I'll introduce you while we're at it, she was first grade at South Clinton Elementary School, and when Gwen Payne retired, we moved Stacy Lawler into Gwen Payne's position, and Lori Erwin into Stacy's position, so that left a first grade position open. So Jenna came in, and she has a long history, her whole entire family is educators, and it just reeks, it just overflows with her passion for kids. So she is going to be at first grade with Reagan-Aleague at South Clinton Elementary School. And then, I have to tell you that there is a joke, that if you come to Clinton Elementary School and it's your first year of teaching, you get hired and then you get married. It just happens so that we get to deal with name changes. So if I call you by your maiden name, you will know why. But next, we have Fayley Nelson, is Fayley with us? Yes, so Fayley came to the Philippines to us, and we actually found her, while I'm introducing you, I'm just going to go ahead and let Lea stand up. So it's Lea, yes. And so George is responsible for helping us find these fabulous, these fabulous maintenance people who just do an amazing job at Clinton, but George and Lea worked together, and they worked together their previous jobs, when George came, he said, "I have a wonderful person who would love to be a part of the maintenance team, she has a son that goes to Clinton Elementary School", so she came, and then next, we found Fayley. So, we just, we have a very, very strong maintenance team right now at Clinton Elementary School, and we want to welcome you both, you're doing a fabulous job. Next, we have Kimberly Newport, so Kimberly Newport is joining us as our governor's pre-K teacher, Kelly Dickinson decided to resign so that she could be a full-time mommy, she had a baby in June, May-June, and so she wanted to be a full-time mommy, and so Kimberly Newport has joined us, she has settled very, very well, Lori Collins is really enjoying working with her, she has some great ideas of how to grow our pre-K program, and her and Deanna Roth, the TA, have just meshed and are getting along just great, so she's been busy meeting her little four-year-olds this week, having the time of her life, so welcome, we are glad that you're with us, Kimberly. Next, we have Molly Ramirez, so Molly is joining us, she also, you're going to see a theme here, she did her internship with us at Clinton City Schools last year at South Clinton Elementary School under Lauren Neal, and so we had a third grade position open at South Clinton Elementary School this year, and so she has just popped right in, so she's very familiar with how we do things at Clinton City Schools and how South Clinton does things. And so, interestingly enough, she has a lot of her kids that she had last year, so they're going to know those expectations, but when you watch her teach, you kind of feel like you're watching Lauren Neal. Lauren Neal did a very good job of training her, so welcome, Molly, we're glad that you're with us. Is Rhonda Smith with us today, she may not have been able to come. Rhonda is another one of our federal program hires that we're using federal money for, she won't begin until August the 23rd, but she is actually a grandmother in our system, and was a longtime, I think 17-year TA in Milan Special School District in West Tennessee, and her husband moved here to work for Farm Bureau, and so, anyway, she has TA experience, and so she happened just to come and register her kid, and when we heard she had TA experience, we're like, "Hey, you want to fill out an application?", and so that's how we found her. Okay, next, we have Gigmar Val, so Gigmar also comes to us from, she's done some work with Anderson County at Andersonville Elementary School, but she is going to be a TA at South Clinton Elementary School, and so we are very, very proud to have her, but her and her sisters, we said, we've swapped them from, not straight from Venezuela, but they do have some Venezuela background, and so, if you want to hear, I just love their accent, they're just fabulous to listen to. So welcome, we are so excited that you have joined us at Clinton City Schools. Next, we have, I don't believe Kristy Wood was able to come today, but she is going to be our ELL teacher for this year, and we don't have very many this year, so we're just contracting with her to come long enough to provide the services for our ELL students. And then also, we have Kelly French with us, so Kelly, welcome. So Kelly also has a daughter that attends Clinton Elementary School, Kelly is from Hawaii, and so I'm always very interested in how someone from Hawaii finds Clinton, Tennessee, but, so she came where her family actually owns a seaside restaurant in Hawaii, and so we feel very honored that she left a seaside restaurant in Hawaii to come work for Clinton City Schools. So, she actually is a certified teacher, so we're hoping that she will work towards getting her certification moved over to Tennessee license, but until that time, she's going to serve as a teaching assistant for us in the CDC classroom at South Clinton Elementary School, and she has just done an amazing job, her passion also just overflows. So welcome, we are glad that you are here. Okay, that is a lot of people, who have I forgotten? Because I know I've forgotten someone. Oh, Amber, Amber, stand up, you've been with us so long that I just didn't think about it. Yeah, wait, so Amber has been with us, Amber is our head custodian at Clinton Elementary School, and if you want to get things done, you go tell Mama Amber. We hired four high school workers to help us with some projects this summer, and it was so precious, because you would see Mama Amber walking, and you would see the four high school kids just like little ducklings in a single-file line, walking behind her, doing whatever she had them do, but she has honestly, the CES maintenance team has gelled very nicely this summer and has really done some amazing things, so Amber, we are very, very blessed. She has several children that go to South Clinton Elementary School, so her kids are South Clinton Bears, so we're pleased that you're part of us. Did I forget anybody else? Okay, so school board, we are going to welcome our new staff members, but we are not going to make you come up, so we're going to give you like a little virtual hug, but welcome, we are glad you're here. At this time, if you all want to stand up and go to the front steps of City Hall, Lori Erwin's going to organize you and take your picture, and then please go home and get some fabulous rest, welcome to Clinton City Schools.
Thank you all, welcome for...
I'm so impressed that you remember everyone's story. That's impressive.
I love the nickname.
Oh, I mean, it was Champ, not... It's been a long wait.
I don't know if I can defend you on that one.
He has a really good sense of humor, he has a very good sense of humor.
That's a good...
All right, Dr. Bobble, we're going to let you take over, I've talked long enough.
All right, moving on, I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda as presented, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Moving on, we'll move to our financial report with Mr. Ray.
We should have, we're going to have, all right, it's passing down.
Thank you.
I sent out the GP Fund, Federal Fund, and the Cafeteria Fund, I'll call this the preliminary June financial report, maybe when I say preliminary, there's a certain reason that I want to be made, as we get, as I kind of tie everything together a little bit more for year-end, I prepared a brief 30-minute presentation for everyone, so, let's go.
Let's roll.
Could be Miss Jordan in charge.
Revenues, of course, just came in better than expected, notably the sales tax revenues we've discussed in the past, expenditures were in line with how we budgeted, second page, second column, last number, $248,000 surplus, that's a little bit lower than we've had in prior years, usually we're between a $400,000 and $600,000 surplus, but also realize we paid for the remainder of the Clinton Elementary addition, and that is roughly $800,000 that we expended, so, paying cash for that. So we need to note, so what does that do to our fund balance? I always say you can't spend fund balance, you can only spend cash. Our school system, our fund balance and our cash are closely aligned, so you can kind of talk about them interchangeably. We'll have, at the end of this year, approximately $5.5 million in cash, $5.5 million in fund balance, so we're in a good position, we've got about a half of a year's budget set aside. Any questions on the general purpose school fund?
I just want to say that I am super proud as a board and Scott Ray, that we were able to pay cash for that project, I think that has set us up nicely to be able to look at some other, to look at some other needed projects within the system that we can address, but I don't compliment him very often, but he manages our money very well.
Yes, he does.
Yes, he does.
Federal projects, really, it's a reimbursement grant, we spend the money within the budget, we get reimbursed. We're about $4,000 out, that's the bottom number on the federal projects, on the second column, it's $4,437. Once I tie everything up, that number should be zero, because our expenses should be our revenues, or vice versa. Any questions on federal projects? I guess you'll notice that we've got a lot more of the grant revenue based on historic history, and that's mainly due to some, several smaller grants that add up to, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars, and then the ESER money that came in. Any questions on federal projects? Cafeteria Fund, the last page, second column, bottom number, 17,0884, that's our surplus for Cafeteria Fund. Well, draw your attention that this year, we did take some of the salaries to manage the contract and manage some of the administrative duties that must be performed, even though we have Airmark kind of doing the day-to-day routine, there's a lot of administration that has to go on behind the scenes. the scenes. So what we, what I did this year is, and future years, we're going to start pulling that administrative salary out of the general-purpose fund and bring it into the Cafeteria Fund. With that said, we'll end the year with a fund balance in Cafeteria of about $100,000. You generally want to maintain three months of expenditures and fund balance for the cafeteria. Given the fact that we use AirMark, it's a little different for us, but I think we're in a, we're in a position where we have enough money to pay for repairs and maintenance on our equipment, and that's what can, can really get the Cafeteria Fund. Any questions on that? I think I was at five minutes.
Well done.
Yeah, Scott, once again, well done, closing out the year there. Job well done. Everybody in administrative and everything else. We closed a rough year and on a, on a great positive note. Thank you for all you do, Scott.
Thank you.
All right. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Ray? All right, hearing none, I'll approve our June financial report as presented.
So.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. Kim, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Nancy Quainer?
Yes.
Hey, Hey Webster?
Yes.
Tim Bobble?
Yes.
Merle Frost?
Yes.
Joey Sissell?
Yes.
Curtis Isbell?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Ray. Moving on to new business. First item up under new business is to approve purchasing policy exemptions, which will be A&amp;A glass and a flooring replacement.
I'm going to let Scott Ray speak to those.
This is a forgiveness versus permission scenario. I try to bring to you anything that's outside of strict black-and-white board policy. A&amp;A Glass has done a lot of work for us at South Clinton, replacing the door frames, the exterior door frames at South, that were steel and rusting and expanding and contracting with the heat, so the doors were not easily opening. It's a really good idea to have continuation of the same vendor from, throughout the building and the same product. So they measure and order the replacement, and we're replacing with aluminum at South. We're starting at North as well. Same issue is going to happen at North with the metal, the steel door frames there. But we obtained quotes several years ago, had some contractors come out and price it, and A&amp;A Glass was the least expensive. And I feel like they do good work. The products are good. The service is good. So I kind of wanted to just continue, continue along with that. We're not in a bid situation, but I'm supposed to get more quotes if it's over $5,000, and I did not obtain quotes. So I'm just bringing that to your attention. And I don't really think it would have been useful to try to get contractors out there when we know we're not going to use them. I don't think that's fair to people's time. So. Any questions on the A&amp;A glass exception? We've got another one with the flooring. That, I did obtain quotes for the flooring. At North Clinton, we replaced the floor in three classrooms, and we used a luxury vinyl plank. I think we talked about that at prior meetings. The difference between, quotes came in at roughly $19,000 using Karen's Carpets there on Clinton Highway. As I investigated some of the issues that were happening in the floor at North Clinton, we had a slab issue with moisture coming up and the glue coming up. So I didn't want to use a glue-down product in those classrooms and take the chance of glue coming up. So I went with a floating floor. The plan was that we'd excavate the, the old floor, seal it with kilns, and then they'd come in and put a floating floor down. But we had some turnover in facilities, so I had to hire them to actually do the sealing. And that brought us over $25,000, I think by $350, actually. So that is an issue. I just wanted to bring to your attention and make you aware of it. I don't think I'm going to have a problem with auditors, but it is outside of, like I said, the kind of the strict policy that we have. And so I needed to get your approval or forgiveness. Any questions on, on what happened there? The, the cost of sealing the floors was $1,900. That's what really brought us over, and I just didn't have the manpower to do it.
And we can't leave the floors undone before the students come. So it's kind of in an emergency category that we needed to proceed anyway.
I agree. I agree.
And same thing with the doors. I mean, you know, we don't, we've got doors that are sticking. It's, it's a safety hazard. So we need to, you know, I find no fault in doing that at all, Scott. You did the right thing.
Well, thank you.
Any questions for Scott, requiring our action by the board as far as approve purchasing policy exceptions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
So.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on, we've got two school board policies that we need to look at. One is a revision. One is a new policy.
These will, we will bring you your plethora of policies that were done from the general session next month. I pushed those off to September just because our board meeting is typically lengthy in August. But these two, we needed to go ahead and approve tonight. The State Board of Education did call a special call session to where we were trying to address, because we are still quarantining students. We're still contact tracing, and so we are going to have students that have to go home, and we wanted to have a plan for them to continue virtual instruction. So both of these deal with that, deal with if a child has to be home for an extended amount of time, that we can offer homebound services. If they're quarantined for an extended amount of time, we can do homebound, or they can participate in virtual instruction, take their Chromebooks home like we did last year, and as long as they log in, complete the classes, and complete their work, we can count them present as a distance learning day. The distance learning day was only approved for quarantines and isolations associated with COVID. So if a child goes home with strep throat, or with a stomach virus, or the flu, the distance learning days are not an option for us to do, but it does give us the leeway, at least as we continue to deal with the fallout of COVID, for us to, to do that. But it does require board approval before we're able to move forward with that.
Any questions or comments in reference to the new school board policies? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the policies as presented on first and second reading.
So.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Motion and a second. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Next item up under new business is to approve the North Clinton Elementary School HBAC replacement.
There's, long story short, it's going to, the actual cost is $11,500. I had $1,000 in case they needed to replace the curb. And that's what the unit actually physically sits on, on top of the roof. There's two things that, the unit that exists, that's there now is about 15 years old. There's two main, two big things that can cause a problem that you need to replace over repair. Usually, it's a compressor. Those are expensive. And the coil, it's kind of like your radiator in your car. The coil's about $4,000. Unit's 15 years old. Expected life of unit's 20 years. On a rooftop unit, I think we're in a replace situation over a repair situation. And he's, I, we've got it ordered because it's kind of, time is of the essence. We still have two hot months ahead of us, so that should be done in the next couple weeks. Any questions? But it does need your approval.
Do they have air conditioning?
They do. The coil is leaking, and it has two compressors. One of the compressors is also leaking. It's running, but it will not, like, if it's a really hot and humid day, it won't keep up. Fortunately, the, the room is vacated, I guess, by 1:00, 1:00 or 1:30 at North. So, you know, the hottest part of the day is generally between 1:00 and 3:00, sometimes even up into 5:00.
Powell doing the work?
Yes, Powell Brothers Mechanical. And the reason for that is they handle all the service work. They've got all the other units. I did quote it out. I just called some vendors and found some prices online of what would the unit actually cost. I priced out the labor, and they're, they're in line with, they're always a little bit lower than everybody else because they're, they're local. They don't have the-
What are they doing to, what's it going to?
Uh, hopefully, within the next three weeks. It's, it depends on delivery. They did have one in stock, the distributor, I think, out of Chattanooga. Transportation seems to be a bit of an issue, logistics nowadays, so we've had some struggles. That's what's holding us up at South Clinton with those rooftop unit replacements. But it's, it's in, in the works.
Scott, did, did you also do like a warranty contract with them as we did with other units at South?
I, I will, kind of after the fact on this. Usually, the one, I call them onesies, twosies, just a one replacement. I don't, but this is a significant unit, and I probably will. And that generally will come in at about 10% of the cost of the unit.
Scott, would, would you like for us to add 15% of this so that you have the ability to look at-
The warranty would be separate and distinct, so that's not required for, for approval. We can do that within the budget. I've set aside money within the budget for things that do come up like that.
Okay.
But I appreciate, that's a good idea. I'll make sure to discuss that with Kenny Powell.
Okay. All right. Any further questions or comments for Mr. Ray regarding the North Clinton HBAC? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the amount in $12,500 for the replacement.
So.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to reports from principals.
All right, we'll just start in the front. Ms. Bumstil, come tell us about South Clinton.
So we are so glad to be back. We had our sneak peek open house night on August 5th, and we had a great turnout. Most of our classes had almost everybody show up. So I think the parents, we had lots of parents cheering when they came in for open house. They were so excited about school starting back. But it was really good. We had great parent participation. And almost the first week of school has gone really well. On our first day, we had our bear mascot, you know, up at the front door greeting all the kids when they came in. So it's been a great week. And I just want to say thank you to a couple different organizations for helping us as we get started this school year. And we want to thank AdFac for providing all the backpacks and the school supplies for any student that needed them. They always give us an abundance of school supplies so that we have plenty for all of our kiddos that need that. And the Education Foundation for holding the teacher's supply depot and letting our teachers and staff members come and get classroom supplies so that they could have what they needed to get started for the year. And then last, I want to thank UCor and one of our former parents that works for UCor, Elizabeth Kendall called me and said that they were actually closing a whole wing of her office because a lot of people are working from home now, and they had lots and lots of really nice office furniture that they were getting rid of, and she would like to donate it to South Clinton Elementary. So not only did they donate lots of desks for teachers and tables and chairs and things like that, but they were willing to transport it to the school for us. So we really appreciated that. So all the organizations that kind of helped us get up and running at the beginning of the year, I just wanted to make sure to tell them. We appreciate them and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bumstil.
Thank you.
Ms. Ryle?
We are also very excited to be back. We had some similar kind of turnout at sneak peek. I think we had probably two-thirds to three-fourths of our families show up for every single grade level. We were shocked that it was, I mean, normally by fifth and sixth grade, the parents are like, yeah, you're good. But they were right there and happy to see the classrooms and all the things that were going on and coming up for the new school year. We also had, we didn't have a bear because we don't have a mascot. In that kind of way, we don't have like a dress-up mascot. But we did have some inspirational music and some pom-poms and some-
I heard there was some dancing going on.
Feathered boas.
Flat-out dancing going on.
Yes, we, and a lot of cheering for the kids as they arrived that day. We really had a good time just celebrating the fact that they were being welcomed back into the building, building. I also want to make sure that we thank AdFac and Education Foundation for all of the things that they have provided for us. We also had, we don't know how they heard about us or why they particularly decided to donate, but the Vendetta Motorcycle Club decided to donate some very nice school supplies. The teachers were really thrilled to, these were some high-end markers and different things that was very exciting, along with many other school supplies. Yes, we have our new kindergarten class. We have 28 kindergartners. We're super excited about just having enough hands, and we have an intern in, in one of the kindergarten classes, too. So we should have plenty of hands for that. And we are celebrating our new floors in our therapy room, in our sixth-grade class, and our STEM lab. They look beautiful. If you have not seen them, you need to come and see them. It's better than you would ever imagine. We had, last year, Wilson Rod Iron donated a post, and Clinton Ace Hardware donated a backboard for, and a goal for us. And so we had that, that was installed prior to the students returning, and so they've been out playing basketball on their new goal. And I also wanted to announce that our new STEM lab, and I say new because it's got the new flooring and it looks really cool, our, our STEM lab, we have renamed it in honor of Tammy Pack, and it's the Tammy Pack STEM Lab. And that is in recognition of her 34 years of continuing dedication to North Clinton and her dream of having a science lab and a STEM lab at North Clinton Elementary. So everybody's very excited. There's going to be lots of materials. There, we've been gathering lots of materials, and we couldn't share those last year. So we're going to have some opportunities for maker space and, and STEM activities in that lab. And inside the Tammy Pack STEM Lab is now an epic Lego wall, and I'll post a picture about, on that, on Facebook shortly. And it was funded from a grant that Tammy Pack was awarded by, from ORAU. And then, that was a couple of years ago, right before COVID. So the timeline for her to have that in place was extended. So we've just now got it up. It's about a four-foot by eight-foot wall of Lego plates that students can create and design things like map, or artistic ideas, or practice letter formation and counting, things like that. So it's a lot of exciting things going on, and we're excited to have the kids back and in there designing, creating, and, and experimenting.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ryle. Ms. Sharp?
I think we just about could have done our reports together. So many similarities. We also had our sneak peek on August the 5th, and it does feel good to be back. We had a lot of parent participation and student participation. And it, it's weird, you forget in a normal year how busy the beginning of the year is, but once the kids got in that day, the first day, it was so calm and nice. It was just such a pleasant feeling to be back. So we would also like to thank the Clinton community for donating school supplies, especially AdFac and the Education Foundation. I was also approached by a representative from Techmer PM. So they are going to partner with us on some school improvement projects this year. Nothing has been finalized yet, but I had pitched some ideas, and they were very supportive. So I'm excited to see how we can work together to improve Clinton Elementary School.
It is okay. She's being careful with her words, but we're looking at some special needs playground equipment.
We desperately want that. So we're excited, but preliminary. We're also excited to continue to grow professionally. We've been working with Keely Potter from NIET, and this week, as an admin team, we wanted to get in and do meaningful walkthroughs. So we've been looking at expectations and environment, and we've seen some really good things. And I think the teachers have appreciated that feedback as well. So we've gone in and noticed before, but actually giving them good feedback about their strengths has been good for them. So reopening celebration with a chamber, so I know that, thank you all to everyone that was able to make it, and that was well overdue, but that was very nice. The ribbon cutting ceremony. So thank you all to all that came. So thank you all to all that came. Some of our mitigation efforts that we have continued, I know we talked about it a little bit last year. We are still doing breakfast in the classroom. That helps with us being such a big school and to keep our instruction, the beginning of instruction on time. And then, um, the classroom setup. So it's a little bit different than it was last year and the teachers are excited about it, but we still have things in place. You know, just with precautions. Dismissal, we're still doing all students in the classroom. The 17th of August will be our first PTCC and Title I meeting at 3:15. And that will be virtual until we're allowing visitors back in the building. 8:26 is our first PLC and we will be looking over data and student group placement. We have stagger days and K first day is 8:23. It's a half day. And 8:24 is a full day for kindergarten and they have been very lively. It's, it's been enjoyable. And August the 30th is picture day.
Thank you, Ms. Sharp. That concludes our principal reports.
All right. Uh, our next school board meeting will be September the 9th here. Fall district meeting is coming up. If you have not let Kim know, uh, if you are available to attend. I believe we'll have a van at 3:30 leaving from the school. If anybody needs a ride, uh, it's in Jefferson County. So if, uh, if you haven't let Kim know if you can attend or not, please do so. And that includes the reports and information. We'll move on to the director's report.
I'll get you to pass that down. So a couple of Clinton City School updates. We are off to a great start. This has been a fantastic week. And when you talk about the energy that our kids and parents have come into the schools with, it has just been, even the teachers. It has just been, it's been a breath of fresh air. I know for all of us in central office, it is kind of taking us back to center, seeing teachers and kids and, and schools. Schools back in action because we can get our dose of, of kid love in the day and our dose of kid love in the afternoon. And it just, um, it's just a good place to be. I want, I did put a report on your desk, or Kim did rather, uh, when you came in. It is an LEA approval compliance assessment. And the State Department has begun this past year doing audits and monitoring of school systems for LEA compliance with a variety of the different Tennessee code annotated. Uh, we were chosen as one of the first groups to participate in that. And so we did that last year and this, this is just the official report that was sent back to us that we did not have any findings, that we met all of the expectations with LEA compliance. And so I wanted you to have a copy of that certainly. Proud that, um, all of our administrative, um, team makes sure that all of those compliances are met. Um, I do want to give you an update on our CES digital sign. We are learning in the world of COVID that nothing moves quickly anymore. And so our sign, Scott, was supposed to come in like in June and then it got pushed to the beginning of July and then it got pushed to mid-July and then the end of July. And we still do not have the digital sign. And it goes back to the chip. And so the, the chip that everyone is trying to get, that also I know car dealerships are dealing with. The chip is in the digital sign and that is inhibiting the delivery of our deliver, of our digital sign. It is still in the makes, it's still in the working, but we were really hoping to have that up by the beginning of school, but we're at the mercy of the vendor getting the digital piece delivered. Um, we still are very committed to the North Clinton sign. That is going to be very next on the list, but we want to make sure that we're pleased with the sign that this vendor has done before we give him another project to do. And so we kind of need to get the Clinton Elementary sign up and make sure that they have done quality work before we give them, um, an additional sign to complete. So I promise we have not forgotten about North Clinton. We haven't even taken care of Clinton Elementary yet, but we're working as hard as we can on that. Jenna told you about Techmer. This is a wonderful opportunity for us. They are very invested and, and very excited about working with Clinton Elementary. And as we have moved our CDC classroom to Clinton Elementary, uh, we do want to make sure that we are providing some, um, appropriate playground equipment for all of our children to access. Um, so we are in the, the very beginning stages, um, just looking at what we feel like that we can be able to pull off and looking at areas and accessibility and, and lots of different things. So that's at the beginning stages, but we certainly appreciate their partnership and look forward to working with them. Just wanted to remind everybody that everyone is eligible for free breakfast and free lunch again this year at all three schools. And so that will be a USDA funded program for the remainder of this year. I wanted to talk to you just a little bit about, you noticed that we hired a plethora of teaching assistants. So I kind of wanted to talk to you about what our plan is, um, for, for them and in moving the needle. We've just gotten our district data back and so we have identified some key areas in which we need to target this year just to address, you know, we, we, we missed nine weeks of school. But then I almost think just equally as impactful was the number of quarantines and isolations that we had last year. And so we, Jamie calculated that our kids missed 7,689 days of instruction last year due to just quarantines and isolations. That doesn't include strep throat and the flu and all the other illnesses that hit children. It also doesn't include the time that they were out awaiting a test. This is just true quarantines. So we know that anytime that our seats aren't in desks listening to the teacher teach, we are, we are losing instruction. So we want to be very intentional and the state has been very intentional about saying that we're not going to dig out of this in one year. This is going to be a multi-year effort to dig out, to get back to where we were pre-pandemic. And so we have to set realistic expectations for our teachers, for our students, for our families and making this happen. We are going to enter a partnership with the Department of Ed that is called All Core Tutoring. And there is a plethora of research out there that shows that you can significantly move the needle through something called low ratio, high dosage tutoring. And so when you look at response to intervention or RTI time, we look at our 25th percentile kids and below. And for 45 minutes every day, they are receiving intervention. And that intervention is skill specific. So it is dealing with phonics, phonemic awareness, fluency, comprehension. What we used to do before RTI came on board was, well, you, you've probably heard us called the bubble kids, the kids that were right on the cusp of being proficient, but weren't quite there. And we worked a lot with those kids to try to push them over into the proficiency realm. Well, when RTI started, we didn't have the capacity or the staff to be able to address that group of kids. So what happens in the RTI time is that we're pumping all of our teaching assistants and all of our efforts into tier one, or tier two and tier three instruction. And then you've got your kids in the, you know, the 26th through the 99th percentile in a classroom that we're calling tier one instruction. We're trying to differentiate and meet the needs of those kids. And to say that that is difficult, we're missing out on that 45 minute to where we could capitalize on providing some pretty intensive individualized instruction for them. So what this grant does is we are using a portion of our SR 3.0 funds to fund a certified intervention teacher in each school. And then we're using it to fund an additional teaching assistant in each school. And those will be specific for intervention or tutoring. So intervention is skill specific. Tutoring is standard specific and those are two very, very different approaches. So our lower kids, we need to be teaching them the skills and kind of the gaps that they have. And then with our approaching kids, they need more time with the standards. It could be that they are fluent and that they comprehend, but they need more time in, in complex grade level text to be able to master that. And so it's kind of two different approaches to, to what we will do. But when we pay for this, it is a matching grant through the state to where they will give us enough money where we could purchase three more TAs to pump into schools that the state funds. And so that's given us kind of three additional, with the exception of Lynn Neal, who's always been our intervention teacher at North Clinton. And she's really one of the reasons that we wanted to do this because we have seen such success. And we actually made a very, very bad decision one year and put Lynn Neal in the classroom. Not that she didn't do a great job in the classroom, but when we took away that certified intervention piece at North Clinton, we felt it. And so we quickly put her back. And she, we have seen the significant work that a certified interventionist can do for kids. So what it will look like is it's not going to start until September, but this addition of an interventionist and two TAs gives us the ability to provide either intervention or tutoring to every single kid in reading that is below grade level. We've never been able to do that. So for 45 minutes, at least four times a week, they will get individualized instruction. So we will continue with the RTI program with our 25% and below. They'll do tier two, tier three instruction, the way we've always done it. Then you're going to have another group of students that is the 26th percentile. And it's not always 26th percentile. I mean, we may have a kid that's 28th percentile that needs to be in RTI. It's, so it's, this is all vague numbers, but let's say the 26th, 27th percentile up to like the 48th percentile. They will be in a group that we're calling the tier A. They're approaching, but they still need some below grade level work with the standards to be able to push them into on track and mastered. And then we're going to have a very small subset of kids through all core tutoring. It has to be a one to three ratio. So all of the research says it has to be a one to three ratio. It has to at least be 30 minutes and it has to be high dosage multiple times per week. So we will look at our approaching kids and those kids that we feel like through intensive tutoring, we can move from the approaching category over to on track. And they will participate in the all core tutoring. So they will be in a tutoring group of one adult, three kids, Monday through Thursday every week. So the all core tutoring, one of the tutors is full time with us. Another tutor is Monday through Thursday. So on that Friday, we knew that subs was an issue last year covering classrooms and Friday tends to be the worst day that we have trying to find subs. And that's a lot of days that teachers will make appointments. So we will use the tutoring and then that one full time TA becomes a full time sub on Friday. And so we can pump her and that will be an additional sub that we will have to where we're not having to pull TAs to cover classrooms. So it is, it is a little overwhelming to talk about, but what will happen is the principals will sit with each grade level and they're going to look at the needs of their kids and they're going to look at everybody that's available in that school during that 45 minute time. And they're going to look at, you know, some teachers naturally work better with lower kids. Some teachers naturally work better with upper kids. And so they're going to look at the teacher's strengths and, and then they will decide as a grade level with the principal, who is going to work with what group. But the all core will be a specific scripted program. The approaching is going to be a specific scripted program. Jamie has done hours and hours of research about what program she wants to use. We have landed on a program called Cars and Stars. And, um, so we are very, very eager. We're going to do monitoring and we're going to see what kind of, uh, progress we can get. I know that one of the questions is what about math? And we will still, like within the group, like we know that there's some grade levels that we really, that's going to be a focus this year is on math. And so the, the number one caveat is are they proficient in reading? Because we know that reading is the basis of everything. But then if they are proficient in reading, when we look at that group, anyone who is not proficient, who is proficient in reading, but not proficient in math, we have the ability within that grade level to form math intervention groups. So it's going to be a very intentional, very specific by grade level, by what the data, what the kids need and what the teacher's strengths are. So Jamie is going to oversee that program. We let her do away as being the director of the virtual school. And she gets to get back into data and intervention. So she is super pumped about this. She has done hours of research to help us craft it into what we think can help us move the needle. We've got some work to do. I mean, I'm not going to lie. We had some high spots this year. We had some spots this year that we know that we need to work on, but we, as a staff, could not have worked any harder. And the commissioner, Schwinn, will even tell you, you cannot outwork a pandemic. And what we did was we kept schools open. We loved kids first. They had food. They were in a warm place. They were loved. And by golly, we still taught them a little bit while they came to school. And so that's what we hang our hat on. So, um, that's the way the all core tutoring will look. Um, district data did come out, so I just wanted to give you a couple of highlights. There are some definite areas to celebrate. Um, number one, in the global pandemic, everyone was worried about testing and how are we going to get kids to come back to the building and test? And Jamie, I believe we had all but one of ours virtual kids that were able to come back and, and that one wasn't, they just refused. They had a family situation and couldn't. Yeah. And so we had a 99.6 participation rate, which was the third highest participation rate in the state of Tennessee. So the state was super proud that we took that seriously, that we wanted to get that data just to see what our baseline and kind of where we stood. Uh, we are significantly above the state average in ELA proficiency in grades four, five and six. And we are significantly above the state average in math proficiency in grades five and six. Our fifth, fifth and sixth grade in both ELA and math, principals, you probably, you may not have even heard this. This may be news to you because this was hot off the press today. But our fifth and sixth grade did perform in the top 10 districts in the state of Tennessee in both ELA and math. So we're going to celebrate that. Now with that said, that doesn't mean that third and fourth did not do a bang up job. What the state saw was the state saw that your younger grades were hit harder for, with, with, with the learning loss than your upper grades were. And so yes, we are going to celebrate that. But we also recognize that third and fourth made some good gains. And I think when T-OS comes out, I think we're going to be sitting pretty everywhere. I really do. I just think you look at those school closures and the amount of quarantines, our fourth grade was hit significantly. Goodness with quarantines and teaching virtual and in person. And all of that goes to affect, the younger you are, the more in-person, face-to-face interaction you need. We know that. And statewide, they said the younger grades took a much more significant hit than the upper grades. So we take it for what it is and we celebrate. I think that our growth is going to look phenomenal. I am extremely proud of what our staff did. Uh, I think that we, we did leaps and bounds in a global pandemic. It was one of the most challenging years that we had, but we are going to celebrate. We're going to see where we are. We're going to build a, a comprehensive plan and we are just going to move forward knowing that it's going to take us some time to dig out. So other than that, we are off to a great start. North Clinton, I appreciate you hanging in with us. We, we've enjoyed having you today. It's nice to have smiling faces to look at. Um, any questions for me? Before we do, I do want to address one issue, um, that you are hearing a lot about. I know that, uh, that, uh, a lot of talk is happening right now with the COVID and mitigation strategies and what schools should be doing and schools should not be doing. When you look across the state of Tennessee, every district is handling it within the context of their own community and kind of where their own community is. Just to let you know, there are an abundance of school systems that aren't even contact tracing this year. They are leaving that 100% up to the health department and relying on the doctors are treating it just like the flu. And if you go home, you go home. And if the doctor reports a grade, the health department can contact trace. There are an abundance of schools that are doing that this year, um, which, you know, if that meets their community needs, that is fine. I want to be very clear that we are continuing to contact trace in Clinton City schools. I think we owe that to our, um, we owe that to our families and to our kids that if they have been exposed, that, um, they need to know and we need to protect to make sure that it, that it doesn't spread. I want to be very frank and transparent that it's here and it's here to stay. And we're going to have teachers get it this year. We're going to have kids get it this year. And we can, I mean, we put mitigation efforts like crazy into place last year. Uh, we fared well, but we also sent home students on quarantine for 7,689 days. And we had fewer than four positive cases based on those quarantines. So for me, I will let the data that we have in Clinton City schools drive our decision. Our kids need to be in school. If I feel like if the teacher, if the teacher confirms that they are a close contact, we will report that to the health department. I think we have to work closely with them through this. We will continue to do that in Clinton City schools. We will continue to quarantine, but I want you to be aware that that may affect, moving forward, our absences versus other districts' absences. But I think that's the right thing to do. I think we have to be responsible with that. We have to continue to work with the health department and that is, that is what we will do. So our plan at this point is that if there is a positive case, we will call the teacher in, we will contact trace that. We will rely on the teacher to tell us who gives you the most worry. Um, you know, I know they give out guidelines of, you know, six feet, three feet and it changes. But the teachers know. The teachers know who the kids have been close to. And those, we will continue. The school nurses will call the parents. We'll put them on quarantine. We're going to send a spreadsheet to the health department. The health department will give the official return to school date, just like we did last year. So I did want to clarify, clarify that because that is a significant difference in how several districts are handling that. I do know that Oak Ridge and Anderson County, we have kind of all banded together and agreed that all three school systems would handle that in a similar fashion. So any questions about that?
Are the quarantine times for the kids the same length of time than they were last year? Has that changed?
I believe Jamie, is that if they can go for a test on day five.
Instead of day six.
So they can go on a test on day five. If it comes back, um, then they can come back on day six.
And we are taking a rapid, rapid test.
Yes. We encountered last year a We encountered last year a lot of conflict where doctors were saying kids could come back, but the, but then it, we just, what we are doing this year is we are relying on the doctor's medical advice. If we, if a kid has symptoms, we're going to send home for a COVID test. When the doctor gives a COVID test, if that COVID test comes back negative, they can come back if they're symptom-free. So all of that remains the same as it did last year.
Our nurses and parents, we had second time last year sending children home of allergies, seasonal allergies, and parents, they just have allergies and they would still have to go get another COVID test and wait for another SEDAR test, and there's just a lot of school days missed.
Well, when you look at the amount of school days missed and the impact, when you've missed almost 8,000 days of instruction, and you can only say that four, I think we were down to four people tested positive while in a quarantine, we've sent a lot of healthy kids home for a long time when they could have been getting instruction, and we see, I mean, we see the, you know, the detrimental effects of that. So it's a balance. It's a balance, but we do feel like contact tracing still needs to occur at this time, just to keep everybody safe. Any more questions for me?
I appreciate the comments you made to the new employees about us. I know there's things going around that we do things politically and for being cool. I don't make political, I don't make political decisions here or things that are cool. I do it for the kids and for our teachers. So I appreciate, I appreciate those comments. Kids are number one with me.
Yep.
And as long as I serve.
Everybody here.
They will continue to be.
Absolutely.
I appreciate those comments.
Yes, those were very nice, very.
Yes, we love our school board.
And you'll find that, you know, any, any comment like that is probably coming from somewhere that number one, doesn't know us, hasn't been affiliated with our system, and doesn't understand how we work with administration, with the teachers and the others. And, you know, it, it, it has always been, and that's one thing I can say about the board. It's always been about what's best for the kids, and, you know, I can say that about this board. I can say that about many of the boards that I've served here with in years past. It's always about the kids. There's always going to be an outlier somewhere, but you try your best to pull the outliers in, but it's always about what's best for the majority of all the kids that we have.
You can't walk through a Clinton Elementary, or Clinton City Schools, any of the three schools, and watch what our staff is pulling off and not know that the support starts here, but it files down to where we have a staff that would do anything they needed to do to protect and keep kids safe.
It's easy to get behind a laptop and send a message. I'll say that. I'll leave it at that.
All right, anything else?
I have just a fun one.
Okay, let's have fun.
You mentioned my work with the Main Street Program. We found out yesterday that we have a generous donation to erect about 17 historic markers around downtown Clinton, and I made sure one of them is going to go at Clinton Elementary, since there has been a school there educating kids in Clinton since just about a year or two after the Civil War. It wasn't even a Clinton City School at the time, but we'll have that designed and installed at some point, probably pretty soon. The donor wants it up, so. You'll be a stop on a heritage tour.
Can I put it by the quilt?
No, it's got to be in the front.
Front yard.
Can we say quilt in the back? Historic site in the front, Appalachian quilt in the back.
Any other questions or comments for Kelly or anything else?
I'm just glad to see more staff helping students and helping teachers.
It's always been people make a difference, not programs. So now the challenge for us is going to be when this SR fund, when this SR fund goes away in three years and we've done amazing things with our people, that's when the challenge comes. We'll have to find a way to keep them.
We do what we need to do for the kids.
We do what we need to do for kids. That's exactly right.
Thank you, everybody, for showing up. It's, it's great to see the excitement. Every year is the school open, and kids are excited, staff's excited, everybody's excited.
They're tired. This is a hard week.
But thank you so much for spending your, your afternoon and evening with us. I appreciate you all for coming. Thank you to Andy as well for, for keeping us, keeping us going here. If there's no further business to come before the board, then I will declare this meeting adjourned.